States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Gentlemen, we've got a special meeting tonight. We have two presentations. We have our annual update from Allegheny College of Maryland and Frostburg State University on the Opportunity Scholarship. So first up, we have Dr. Cindy Bambara of Allegheny College of Maryland. Please.
Good afternoon, everyone. On behalf of our Board of Trustees, our Foundation Board of Directors, our faculty and staff, and most importantly, our students, thank you for the support of this program. Your investment is greatly enhanced by the economic opportunities for our citizens and our community by supporting education, job training, and career preparation, as well as supporting families and the core values that reflect our community. We are most grateful for your vision to make this happen. The future of the region's well-being is dependent on having an educated and skilled workforce. Allegheny College of Maryland is committed to serving as an educational partner to meet this need. We have met this need during the most trying of times during the past year amidst a global pandemic. We stand ready to be a major partner and part of the solution to Allegheny County's road to economic and social recovery. We will continue to develop and enhance our academic and career programs, instructional delivery systems, to meet the needs of this community. The Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship Program is a significant mechanism that assists our local students to become productive citizens. So again, I thank you very much for your generous support of this program.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bambara. Also tonight, we have David Jones with ACM.
Thank you, Doctor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Staff. Every year, it's a real pleasure to just come before you and provide an annual update on the Opportunity Program. And as in previous years, I have before you our fiscal year 2020 report. And I'd just like to just take a minute just to go through it, provide a really brief overview of the report. I don't want to read it word for word, but I think it just shows the impact about the importance of the program, gives you a lot of very good data. So inside the front cover on the left side, I have about 10 quick facts that I think really show the impact of the program. Recipients of these scholarships represent every community in our county. Students from every public and private school, as well as homeschool and GED students have benefited from the program. They represent nearly every major and curriculum at the college. The recipients started at age 18, and we have recipients all the way up to age 56, with an average age of 23. They support high school, early college students who are low-income, merit scholarships for the highest academic achievers, the subsidy for those who have documented low income, as well as the Workforce Development Program. And I think it just shows the depth and the breadth when this was established. The next page just gives even more of an overview of the credit majors, the numbers, some of the continuing education workforce development that has been offered, the high schools in the cities represented. The inside fold where the staples are, where there's a photo collage, is just a sampling of some of the recipients that have benefited from the program. These are the faces of our neighbors, our friends, your colleagues, that have benefited from this support. The next page talks about the economic impact of the college, and we're really proud to say things like that students enjoy a 15.4% rate of return, the tax base has increased by $9.2 million because of the college, taxpayers see a return of $1.60 for every dollar invested, local governments see an annual rate of return of almost 5%, and the college was rated by the Brookins Institute in their last study as a top 20 community college in the whole country out of several thousand for the economic value that they add. And I think those are just some really important facts to show just the impact of the college, but also of this program. Usually at this time, we bring a couple of our scholarship recipients just to share for a few moments and talk them with Administrator Bennett. We thought because of COVID, it's best not to do that. So what we did was we put together just a short video to highlight the importance. Instead of using current students, we have graduates, alumni, who benefited from the program, who now live, work, and give back in really important ways for our community, as well as some local business leaders. So if I may just show a brief video up there.
Please, please.
Providing hope to Allegheny County through workforce development and job training.
ACM gave me a great start to my professional career after I suffered a career-ending injury and could no longer be a firefighter. I was one of the first recipients of the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. Upon graduating from ACM, I was able to complete additional degrees and now own my own small business in Allegheny County, as well as give back to our community by volunteering. My family and I continue to live and work in Allegheny County, and I'm very appreciative of your support and investment in me through the Opportunity Scholarship Program.
ACM gave me a great start, and I was one of the first recipients of the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. After ACM, I went to Frostburg State to finish my bachelor's degree, and then I've been working out of town for the last few years. But I'm happy to say that my future husband and I are moving back to the area, and we just purchased a home, and I've even started my own business right here in Allegheny County. Thank you for your support of the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship.
Thanks to the Opportunity Scholarship, I was able to get the high-end skills training that I needed to secure a good job here in Allegheny County. I know that I have a bright future for me and my family thanks to the skills that I learned at Allegheny College through the Opportunity Scholarship.
Thank you, Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. You have afforded National Jet Company with a skilled workforce pool, allowing us to meet our high-demand workforce requirements. Thank you, Allegheny College and Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship.
Recipients of this economic development program represent every community in our county. In addition, every public and private high school, as well as homeschooled and GED students have been awarded funding through this program. Nearly every academic major and curriculum is impacted, as well as a variety of key workforce development programs. The age range of recipients is from 18 to 58, with an average age of 23 years old. As part of an independent study, students enjoy a 15.4% rate of return on their investment in education at ACM. Additionally, taxpayers see a return of $1.60 for every dollar invested in education at ACM. State and local governments see an annual rate of return of 4.8% for their investment in ACM. The economic impact from Allegheny College of Maryland is significant and greatly benefits from the Opportunity Scholarship Program. To further demonstrate this impact, Allegheny College of Maryland is rated in the top 20 community and technical colleges for the value that they add to the future economic success of graduates.
ACM has given me a great start to my professional career, as I'm one of the first recipients of the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. Upon graduating from ACM with my degree in nursing, I furthered my education at Frostburg State University, and I continue to serve as a registered nurse, and currently serve as an assistant professor of nursing at ACM to help prepare the future workforce. I will continue to live and work in Allegheny County and serve our community. Thank you for your support and investment in me through the Opportunity Scholarship Program.
As a first-generation student, ACM gave me a great start to my professional career as a teacher in Allegheny County to better the lives of our future leaders. Upon graduating from ACM, I furthered my education at FSU and currently teach at Washington Middle School. I recently purchased a home in Allegheny County and plan to continue to give back to my community. Thank you for your support and continued investment in me in the Opportunity Scholarship Program.
The Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship provided me with a jumpstart to a new career in Allegheny County. Because of the financial support provided, I am able to succeed and better help the county, myself, and my family. I'm grateful for the investment that was made in me, as well as the programming provided by ACM, and appreciate your continued investment in the Opportunity Scholarship.
As a part-time bus driver, I wanted to make a better life for my family and better my education. So I entered ACM and entered the nursing program where I earned my nursing degree, and I got a position at UPMC Western Maryland, where I love my job and I can provide a better future for my family. And I did this by getting the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. It helped me a lot.
As the largest employer in Allegheny County, the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship is critical to UPMC Western Maryland, ensuring we have access to a highly skilled workforce to meet the healthcare needs of our community. We are very grateful for both Allegheny College and the scholarship, which allows us to hire some of the best and brightest students from this region to remain and work locally. Thank you for supporting the Opportunity Scholarship.
Thank you for your support of education and economic development in Allegheny County. Your investment already has and will continue to pay huge dividends.
I am the face of Opportunity.
I think when you see that, you can hopefully just get a small glimpse of the impact of the program on those who have benefited from it. I wish we could fill this room, because I know ACM and Frostburg could as well, just for people to say thank you for what you've done. In front of you, you do have a booklet, a bound booklet, that has some of the thank-you letters from the recipients from last year. And when you read through their stories, there's hundreds of the letters there, you'll see the impacts of single mothers, displaced workers, first-generation students, and the list goes on. Please know that your impact does make a huge difference. As a final, just a reminder of the impact, what we have for you is, this is a framed print of some of the recipients for the Opportunity Program. I know many of you, if you can get in your office, have had these in your office. I'd like to give you a new one, which is some of the faces of your neighbors, of your friends, your colleagues, just to show the impact of this program, but it's just our way to say thank you. And again, we are very grateful. And this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Foundation President, Dr. Bobby Flannery.
Thank you, David.
Back again. Thank you, guys, so much. You've done a fantastic job, and the help for our students is amazing. Many of the students that work in my office, that were students at Allegheny College, they just can't express themselves in a more positive way. Allegheny College works collaboratively to bring better economic opportunities and provide the education, job, training, and career preparation services needed by our residents. This college makes an impact like no other entity in our community. The comprehensive scholarship statistics are impressive. The documented economic impact shown by the external entities is powerful, but the quotes from the students, graduates, and employers, that's what shows this program is life-changing. The front cover of the report says "impact," and I can't think of a better word to show the importance of this program. Again, thank you. We are most grateful for your support and investment in our community. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
You saw it. And now I'd like to introduce Kim Leonard, our Court Trustees Chair.
I can do it from here instead of right up there. The first words were "hope," and I think the "hope" sign, number one, is, you hope I'm sure. And I am, you know, up to this, but sure enough to talk to it. Thank you for investing in our future. Our future really is education-dominated, whether it's the public school system, or whether it's ACM or Frostburg. All the entities put their efforts into generating a community that is hopeful of the future, and you invest in the future. What better legacy could you leave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay. Thank you so much, Allegheny College of Maryland, and we're going to continue to be supportive of the Opportunity Scholarship. The, obviously, local impact grants have been impacted by COVID, with Rocky Gap being closed for three months and basically having zero revenue. So Administrator Bennett and everyone on that committee, please make sure that the Opportunity Scholarships remain a priority. I think that's the opinion of this board for sure. Up next, we have Frostburg State University, Dr. Ron Nowaczek.
Thank you, Commissioner Shade, and again, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you very briefly this evening. I want to basically echo much of what you heard from ACM. I hope the one thing you appreciate, which I certainly appreciate, is you saw the fact that a number of those students from ACM then go to Frostburg State University. I hope you realize that I think you've got a very good working relationship and higher education here between the institutions. It's not competitive, it's supportive of each, and we try to make sure the students can get through. We all know that education's important at all levels, and for some, it may be career training, for others, it may be an associate's degree, and for others, it may be a four-year degree, but we work together for the betterment of the county. And with regard to that, the Opportunity Scholarships do mean quite a bit to us and to our students. This past year, students from 13 different municipalities or communities were funded at Frostburg State University through the Opportunity Scholarships. As Commissioner Shade mentioned, the shutting down of the casino for a few months because of COVID impacted us considerably in terms of being able to help students financially, but yet we were able to make contributions to almost 200 students, and every little bit helps those students. Financially, as we all know these days, it is tough, so the money that you've been able to provide really makes a difference. And again, I'll echo what you heard from our colleagues at ACM. Over 80% of the graduates that have received the scholarship from you and through the county have remained in the community, and we are developing that workforce that is necessary moving forward. So across the state, and I think President Bambara would agree with me on this, we know there's competition for students, and many counties are offering opportunities to students to stay close to home. This money is keeping those students here rather than having them go somewhere else in the state. And we know that if we can keep them here, we have the ability then to get them jobs and keep them in the community as both citizens, but also as individuals who are helping contribute to the economic well-being of the area. We provided you information, I'll leave you for that information. We also have a very brief video. I'm going to see if I can make this work. You said it would be there. Let's see. Do I have to close this? Or is there? Okay. And there it is. Okay.
Hi, my name is Carissa Brandenburg, and this is my almost 10-month-old Aubrey. I am a 2015 graduate of Frostburg State University with my degree in elementary education with an endorsement in middle-school English Language Arts.
My name is Blake Getz. I am a graduate of FSU recently, from May of 2020. I'm also a lifelong resident here in Allegheny County. I grew up in Levee, Maryland, and actually just most recently moved back to Frostburg, Maryland, up here with my girlfriend.
Hi, my name is Carrie Ravel, and I'm a senior at Frostburg State University. I've been a resident of Levee since 2014, when we relocated here for my husband's job.
I teach at Braddock Middle School, so that is here in Cumberland.
I was lucky enough to get a job after college, working here locally in Allegheny County, at Allegheny High School, teaching history and government. And I felt I was so prepared going into the interview process because of the experiences that I had right here at FSU. I had so many impactful teachers in this county growing up, and it's honestly an honor and a really awesome feeling to be able to walk those same halls as them and call them my coworkers, really.
I enrolled in Frostburg State University and have been studying biochemistry so that I can get the prerequisites needed to apply to medical school. My hope is to return to Western Maryland after med school to work here as a primary care physician.
I was able to stay in the community and hopefully make a positive impact on students here. I want to thank the Allegheny County Commissioners for the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship, because without scholarships such as that, I would not, yeah, I would not have been able to achieve my goal, get my degree, and now have my master's degree in educational leadership, also from Frostburg, class of 2018.
This scholarship helped me be able to play Division II soccer, also at Frostburg State and Division III for four years, one of the many blessings I had because of Frostburg State. And I truly believe I was able to do well in most of my classes because of the experience that I gained being a student athlete and a student at the same time. Thank you to the Allegheny County Commissioners for doing this, to the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship, and I'm eager to tell my students about this wonderful opportunity here that they can take advantage of in the future.
I rely on a combination of grants and scholarships to bridge that gap. I want to extend my sincere thanks to the county commissioners for their educational funding to help make this career change possible. Without their funding, I would not be able to meet all of the expenses necessary for me to return to school. I urge you to continue to sustain this funding so that students like myself can continue their educations and reinvest in our local community and grow more successful businesses and careers in Western Maryland. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. So thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Again, once again, thanks for your continuing support for our students and the residents of Allegheny County.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Nowaczek.
I'm going to leave that off. That looks nice.
Thank you for the mask, by the way.
You're welcome.
Very nice. All right. Moving on to our public hearings tonight, we have a code bill, 2-21, compensation for public officials. Attorney Beeman. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Shade, this is a public hearing on Code Home Rule Bill Number 2-21, Compensation for Public Officials. We previously introduced this bill at our prior meeting. We've had prior public hearing on this. We're here again for our second public hearing, and today is a legislative date, so following any public comment, you Commissioners are able to take action.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment, either in person or written, submitted to the board?
Commissioners, there's been none submitted to the board in writing.
Okay.
Whoops.
Oh. Oh, comment? Is this for item three or something else? Okay. No, no, that's fine. We'll get to you in a minute. Yep. This is just on the compensation one. So there is no comment. Do we need to take action tonight, Mr. Beeman?
Yes, you're able to, Commissioner.
Okay. Is there a motion to take action on Code Bill 2-21?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'd just like to thank the Salary Study Commission for putting in their work and time and making those recommendations on that. Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda this evening, we got a light one, only three items on it. Administrator Bennett?
Yeah, as you said, three items, a light agenda tonight. Item four is Resolution 21-2, authorizing resolution for fiscal year '22 transit grant applications. Item five is Resolution 21-3 for rules and regulations changed to our policies and procedures. And item six is Declaration of Surplus Property.
Great. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. Administrator Bennett, anything else?
So Commissioners, bear with me tonight here. Three separate letters I'd like to read into the record and pieces of correspondence we'd like to get your signature on.
Absolutely.
If you're so choose.
Please.
So first letter, dated today to Ms. Tiffany Robinson, the Secretary of Maryland Department of Labor, and it reads, "Madam Secretary, we are writing today to request your assistance to rectify an ongoing issue with State of Maryland's Department of Labor's Division of Unemployment Insurance. As of this writing, we have had 27 current Allegheny County government employees representing 5% of our workforce have fraudulent unemployment claims filed in their name against Allegheny County Government. Both employees and our staff have encountered difficulties in getting assistance from the Division of Unemployment as they tried to inquire about this fraudulent activity. As you might imagine, the thought of identity theft and fraudulent claims are enough to concern anyone affected, but to not be able to receive a timely response from the Division of Unemployment only adds, I'm going to take this off a second, adds to the concern. Through our inquiries, we have learned that multiple agencies throughout the State of Maryland and many others in Allegheny County are experiencing the same fraudulent claims and slow response times. While we understand that the global pandemic has added great stress to your office, we respectfully ask that you double down on your efforts to mitigate this fraudulent activity to provide some relief to our employees and residents." Signed by you three Commissioners.
Great. Want to go ahead and read the?
Sure, while you're signing, the next one's a little bit shorter. Also dated today to the Honorable William C. Smith Jr., Chairman of the Judicial Proceedings Committee, and it reads, "Dear Senator Smith, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County, Maryland, are writing today to state our opposition to Senate Bill 627, Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights: Repeal and Procedures for Discipline. Due to this bill's emergency status and the fact that the law enforcement bill of rights has been in place since 1974, our local law enforcement agencies would not have enough time to properly prepare and staff for this bill's requirements. This bill would significantly change the function of law enforcement agencies and could potentially put our officers at risk. We respectfully ask that you take more time in research before implementing such substantive changes on an emergency basis and not pass SB 627. Signed, all three Commissioners." So there's the next one for you.
Excellent. Thank you.
And if you like, I'll jump to the next one.
Yep, please do.
Okay. Third and final, also dated today, Senator Dolores G. Kelly, Senate Finance Committee. Dear Senator Kelly, we, the undersigned members of the Allegheny County Board of County Commissioners, would like to express our support for Senate Bill 869, Transportation Western Maryland Mark Rail Extension Study. This bill will require the Maryland Department of Transportation to study extending Maryland-area-regional commuter mark commuter rail service to Western Maryland. As you know, Allegheny County and Washington Counties are currently not serviced by mark commuter service. Mark commuter rail service to Western Maryland would, in short, open a world of possibilities to our citizens who otherwise commute to the Baltimore/Washington/DC metro areas. This potentially worthwhile endeavor would have lasting benefit for our region. In short, we appreciate Delegate Quarterman and the many co-sponsors of this legislation and respectfully request your committee's favorable consideration of this matter. Should you have any questions or comments regarding our position, please do not hesitate to contact us."
Great.
And there's the last one.
Good idea. Any other comments this evening?
Just a very brief one. We launched our budget just today, so we're gearing up for budget. We are moving back everything just a couple weeks this year to hopefully coincide with things getting a little better from COVID, with the hope of hopefully having some true public meetings to discuss our budget. So much more to come on that, but we sort of launched everything today.
Great. Attorney Beeman?
I have nothing to add.
Great. Commissioner Caprelli?
Nothing to add.
Sir, I'm good this evening.
Okay.
Good night.
I would like to add two things. County Office Building will be reopening on Monday, March 8th. Our next meeting will be Thursday, March 11th. In this room, it will be open to the public. And gentlemen, as we discussed, I think that's very important, because there are some issues, you know, not just with our board, but other local government, that the public needs to be there, the public needs to be able to give their voice and give their opinions. The other things we've been working on, I've been in close contact with the Board of Education. They're beginning the reopening process for full grades on Monday, March 1st, and then they're going to phase in more students on the 8th and 15th. So we've obviously offered to help in any way we can, and so please stay tuned. We've offered, whether that's any support we can provide financially, or personnel, or anything we need to do to get the kids back in school safely. I did speak with Janelle Mayer, who's our health officer, and pretty much every educator who's wanted a vaccine has been able to receive a vaccine. If you're an educator, working in the school system, and haven't received a vaccine and would like it, please contact us directly, and we'll make sure we're able to get you a vaccine as soon as that becomes available, because you are on the priority list right now. On a quick vaccine update, we are over 9,800 vaccines have been administered in Allegheny County. We should go over 10,000 vaccines administered this weekend, which is an incredible, incredible number, and it speaks to the great job that the Health Department's doing. You know, we were criticized when we had a spike of COVID, which we couldn't control, but I'll tell you what we could control was when we worked with the Governor's Office and worked with the Health Department, and we got a testing site at the fairgrounds, and we tested more people than any other county in the state for a long time. We're still the third-highest tested county in the state of Maryland. And, you know, there was pressure. They said, "Look, close restaurants, that's what's causing the spike." Every county that closed restaurants has a higher COVID rate than Allegheny County. Every one that closed restaurants. They caused economic harm without fixing the problem, and you're seeing it in California, you're seeing it all over the place. And so I just want to thank you all for standing firm, because the business owners appreciate it, and the people of Allegheny County appreciate it. This has been a horrible, horrible pandemic, and I hope that we're coming This has been a horrible, horrible pandemic, and I hope that we're coming out of it now. Please remain vigilant. And I'll just say that this board's been able to get $3,250,588 out to over 300 businesses in the community. Some counties haven't even spent their cares money. We've got every dollar out the door spent. So thank you for that, and I appreciate our staff for working tirelessly this last year. They haven't been taking any time off. It's been busier than ever. So thank you very much. Okay. Our next speaker tonight, we do have one signed up for public comment, Mr. Ryan Brenneman. Please.
Thank you for your time this evening, commissioners. I appreciate it. I'm here this evening as a resident of 555 Green Street to speak about the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad. I have sent numerous emails and information to commissioners and other organizations highlighting what I believe is to be a huge miscarriage of funds that have been provided, and I can no longer support that my tax dollars continue to support an organization that isn't using those in a wise manner. And I say that in terms of being involved with the railroad for a period of time, both in marketing efforts, as my company has helped them through Polar Express, and I just see that nothing is really changing. This is a Spotify playlist that's been playing for five years now, and it's on a constant loop cycle. Every time we seem to get one step further, there's another step back, and I'm gravely concerned that an additional multimillion-dollar bailout would be given when we haven't proven that this thing can even be fully operational and self-solvent. I believe that one of the core things needs to happen is it has to be self-sustaining. I don't believe that it should be constantly going back to local government for more and more money, and we need real answers of where the money is being spent. I don't believe, and I think that the commissioners should seek not just in a fiscal review of the past five years, but I think you need to do a study to determine, is it even feasible? And will people come here to ride the train with a ticket dollar of what it is? For a comparable price, you can go to Six Flags, and you can go to Hershey Park and spend an entire day. We've heard from residents over and over that the train is outpriced. Local residents cannot even put their child on a train. Well, that's true when you have ticket prices that range from $40 to $70. And so looking at the totality of how many residents ride the train, and then how many non-residents of local to our county ride the train, I just don't know that it's a wise decision that we continue to invest taxpayer dollars into an entity that isn't serving the full needs or we're not getting a full ROI. I think that the trail does far significant business for us with the number of businesses that are directly supported from the rail trail, and it goes down to a stewardship issue. Has any commissioner seen Meadow View with the Santa's House that's falling down and in a complete disarray? This is the Polar Express that was put up, this large item that FSU students made, and it was put up for the Polar Express, and it sat up for the past year and two or three months now. It's fallen down, it's cracked. I believe it to be a safety hazard, and it's on county-owned property, but this just speaks to the continued disregard of the resources that has been given to an organization, and this is how the things are treated. And I have pictures on my iPad of the condition of that item up there, but how can you ever become self-sustaining if you can't even take care of the stuff you've been given? And so now, a new Santa House has to be built for several thousand dollars, and I don't know what the cost of that is, but we continue to do the same thing over. So we come out for Polar Express with, you know, nearly 11,000 riders, close to a half a million dollars of revenue, and that's gone within the next four months. How does that happen? And the last thing that I'll say is, is that I believe that the board should be comprised of individuals who are engaged in the facets that can bring value to that. Nothing against elected officials, but the accountability should come from the elected officials not providing grants and resources to an organization. If the entire board is made up of elected officials, all we have is elected officials involved in a nonprofit entity now. It doesn't actually solve the majority of the problems, and I believe it to be a conflict of interest. Whereas the state and the county are providing grants, certainly there should be oversight on the boards, but I don't believe that the entire nonprofit board should be made up entirely, nearly entirely, of elected officials. And I see that as a disservice, not because any of the elected officials have nothing of value to add, because they most certainly do, and in many times, they have a significant value to add. But coming here concerning the potential of $2 to $3 million, whatever that number is, and in a large part, it's because we've never really gotten good information. You presented information at a meeting here, it's disputed the next morning on local news outlets, and so what are the citizens to know of what is actually happening? And how did we not foresee that the track would need this level of maintenance before the FRA report comes out? And furthermore, why was the first person laid off at the railroad track maintenance after there was an emergency amount of money given to do track maintenance? The tie sat at the yard for, and the general public can drive up to the gate and see this, but there were the large number of railroad ties that sat there for a year, and nothing was done with them. And so it just constantly is a back to the commissioners, back to the cities to seek funds, and as a city resident paying both taxes, it just, it doesn't make sense to me anymore, and I think there needs to be not only real questions about what has been spent previously, but what is the feasibility of this railroad moving forward? I think that there are some grave concerns of whether the thing can be profitable or not.
Commissioner Caprelli, you're on the railroad board, and I think you share some of the same concerns.
Sentiment, I do, and I believe everyone up here does, and this is something we've been discussing for some time, even prior to this request for these particular dollars. And I think that we have all but assured pretty much everyone that those dollars will not be available, not at that price. Our concern was over time, annually, our hotel-motel money goes to maintenance and upkeep as opposed to, you know, here we are so many years down the road, and allegedly the track needs a complete overhaul. What we are doing at this time is reviewing the inspection reports. We're going to look over those and make our own assessment going forward to try and pinpoint our dollar amount. I think the second item is that there has been a discussion whether the railroad be classified as a Class II or a Class I. Allegedly, if it's re-categorized as a Class I, that would significantly decrease the amount of dollars for this track repair also. We acknowledge your concerns, and we're looking into everything, pretty much everything that you stated here tonight, I can assure you.
I do appreciate that. You know, sometimes, under the guise of COVID, you know, everything is gloom and doom right now due to COVID, but I can tell you that the Strasburg Railroad has been operating in a limited capacity. We pitched an idea to put a speeder car in place on the railroad so that they could transport bike riders called the bike taxi, and we couldn't even get $5,000 to get this thing off the ground. And so when we look at the opportunities, it's about where the money is being spent, too. A business owner understands that you only make investments that have a return on that investment, and instead, the railroad opens a café. Well, we have Base Camp Coffee, and we have Clatter Coffee, and we have The Corner Tavern, and we, the railroad, not we, but the railroad opens a café that never gets off the ground, but yet has an additional hundreds of dollars of rent money due that, you know, was at one time back. And so it's a, it needs to be a total evaluative look of not just where the money is going, but why the money has gone. At the end of the day, and I believe that putting specialists on the board as advisors, our county tourism director should be sitting on this board in an advisory capacity. We have no Main Street programs, we have no Downtown Development Commission people that understand the tourism market, but it's one of the greatest tourism draws into our county, and it's a huge asset. I fully believe that a healthy, sustained railroad is a benefit to the visitors and residents of our county. We just have to get it there, and I think it's going to be a hard look at what has happened over the years.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you very much for your thoughts, Ryan, and if anything else, I'm sure Commissioner Caprelli can follow up with you.
Sure.
Okay. Our next public business meeting, as I said, will be two weeks, Thursday, March 11th, 2021, 5:00 PM in this room. It will be open to the public, socially distanced, wearing a mask, but I think that's important to have the public back, gentlemen. So thank you, be safe, have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir.